I'd like to call this July second, twenty twenty four, reorganization meeting of the Board of Education session. We can hopefully stand up for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now administer the oath of office to our elected board member, Ms. Jen Spears. Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, Jennifer Spears.
Aye, Jennifer Spears.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the school board members of the Manchester-Schortsville Central School District.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the school board member of Manchester-Schortsville Central School District.
Shortsville, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Shortsville, New York, according to the best of my ability.
I will now accept nominations for the office of president.
I would nominate, I'd like to nominate Jamie Simmons. Second.
There's no other nominations, I will entertain a motion from the board to nominate James Simmons as the president of the Board of Education. Scott?
Second.
Amy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen? I'll now accept nominations for the office of vice president.
I'd like to nominate Amy Walton.
Second.
There's no other nominations, I will entertain a motion from the board to nominate Amy Walton as vice president of the Board of Education.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
We're the gavelless.
We'll do the signatures and then I'll break the gavel over to Chris.
There's signs of it there too.
Yep. I will now turn the meeting over to Mr. President, Simmons.
Thanks, everybody. So we'll, so we have to transition to our regular meeting?
My apologies, I have to give you guys your oaths and symbols. You can stand up and do it together. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Jamie Simmons, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the school board.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the school board.
As president and vice president.
As president.
Vice president.
Of the Manchester-Schortsville District, Shortsville, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Of the Manchester-Schortsville Central School District, Shortsville, New York, to the best of my ability.
Now you can sign it, they should have given you the right. Now I'll turn over the meeting to others.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much. A good step here for all of us, appreciate kind of the unity, we've done so much, managed to breathe here up to this point. And I just want to thank everyone at the board for the opportunity to lead this group once again. And thank you, Amy, as well, and to all board members, and welcome to our list, board member. The next thing to do with respect to our reorganization is to handle quite a number of items that are mainly administrative in nature that we do every year. And we're going to do that by consent agenda, but as we've done in recent history, consent agenda being a tool that, you know, assumes the fact that there's not a lot of discussion, I just want to ask board members before we go ahead whether there was anything you'd like to pull out, based on what we saw in your packet and based on the items on the consent agenda. If there are, we'll pull them out and vote separately if we're going to go, and we'll proceed under the consent agenda rules. If you want to make a, you want to make a comment?
Just a comment.
Okay. I think, why don't we? Okay, if it's something that would affect your ability to vote, then let's pull it out.
Nope, not at all.
Okay, if you just, if you have a comment, I mean, we're all here, Scott, so you're welcome if you want to.
No, no, it's just, Mr. Bernard's name is spelled wrong in one, and if it matters, it matters because it's a B E R document. It's spelled one, there's a D spot, it's spelled B E R and I can't find it, but I think it is.
We can probably amend that if we want something to file.
Being really good at it.
Okay, fair enough. Glad we got that out there.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, alright, so with that said, there's, there's nothing particularly, you know, sensitive in here, this is stuff we do every year. I just want to make sure that kind of, that the board has an opportunity to say so. So with that, we will go ahead and. Okay, so, I'll read the resolution here. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to educational law, approves the organizational meeting consent agenda. Those are all the items that you've already hopefully read through, they're on here. So if I have a motion? Motion from Chelsea, very good, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Jen, fantastic. At this point, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, great, thank you guys very much. Expedientious way to handle a lot of the routine stuff here, get it set up for a new week, fantastic, alright. With that, Kim, do we need to do anything special to move on to our regular agenda at this point? We're kind of already in the meeting, okay? Very good, so we'll move on to our regular meeting agenda at this point. And, let's see, do we know if there's any public comments? I think we're, I think we're good, okay. So we'll skip that for tonight, very good. Alright, then that takes us to, by the way, we're, probably for the first time, I know, Tim, we've got a piloted board doc, so if you see the board members on the Chromebooks more than usual, I'm trying to go paperless tonight, so we'll see how that goes. So far, it looks like we're going to be okay, but, you know, we're trying to get kind of to go deep into this whole paperless thing, so. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and work through the minutes of prior meetings, so. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to educational law, approves the June twelfth, twenty twenty four, regular Board of Education minutes as presented. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry. I saw a public comment, okay, yeah, as a matter of fact, so we have another special item that we do each, this time each year, which is a code of conduct hearing, so for those who joined us at the meeting, that's a little different, a little bit different from our usual protocol, where we're, we're, we hold a public hearing to field any questions about the code of conduct. I think the changes this year were minimal updates.
So I can comment, I shared with the board that the public, I know the code of conduct this year had no adjustments because one of the goals coming out of last year in my original entry plan and working with the leadership team was we are going to do a full revamp of the code of conduct in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In all of our experiences, the folks at that table that have done those, we feel strongly that that's a year-long process that will involve multiple stakeholders, leadership team, teachers, students, parents. Our goal will be next spring to have a updated code of conduct, and then a year from right now, presenting in more detail what those adjustments were being, where they came from, and hopefully then approving that at the August board meeting. Because remember, the goal is the public tonight, and then the approval at the August board meeting. So next July, looking at a revamped code of conduct.
Alright, so I'll just pause for a moment, if there are any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them, and if not, we'll move on. Alright, fair enough.
I had a question though, sorry.
Oh, please, by all means, yeah, this is true.
I just had a question under the, on the last page, under the Board of Education section, specifically on numbers two, three, and six, where it says that the board will make copies of the code available to parents at the beginning of the school year. That's number two, number three says that we're providing summary of the code of conduct written in plain language to all parents of district students before the beginning of the school year, and making this available later in class. And number six says making the code of conduct available, accessible for review by students, parents, and other community members. Just curious, how are, how are we doing that?
Number six is what tonight is.
Okay.
That's the one here.
So it does a little website, do we claim any writing for like, community members? Okay, so I just wanted to quickly tell you that. How, as far as getting it out to parents before the school year, is that also tonight?
No, we make copies available to parents, the principals make them available during orientations, during.
During the offices.
Yeah, during all the offices.
So it's up to the students again, I mean, it's very, I've never seen one, so that's why that's in, I, I just think very popular. Because of my student, I get that, but that's why I have a question.
We forgot the address, and um, partially, so we have to send it to the early general course, we stopped doing that, it's a huge long document. But it's on the website, there's a student family version that's printed out, it's talked about a few days. And we put it out during, like, last day, and those pre-school websites that show out for Google or Instagram, that's what I'm back.
But we do not send it like in a mass mailing.
No, it's like.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question for Karen, I was reading the lengthy process about students with disabilities as far as being suspended for long-term. What is I A E S? What is this?
It's an alternative education setting, so if we have to put somebody in a temporary setting for their tutoring, or something that's not their typical education, we have to have a meeting to discuss what that is like. An alternative education setting for students who are suspended, that's overseas education. Think short-term, it's like, if you're coming in from a immediate. So maybe those students without long-term, but we're going to put some, if you're like in the middle, what are you going to ask them?
Okay.
I'll come out with a figure.
Is there any follow-up required on the dissemination piece, or we've done like, it's covered, or? Chris, is that anything?
I don't know, I'm, if we've, people have received feedback that they're not seeing it, that we can send reminders earlier in the year that it's on the website, I think the sensitivity is just what Karen shared, which is, if it's going out, it's to seven hundred kids and ending up in the garbage or in backpacks, so. But we can send something, we can work on communication early in the year so that people know, once it's approved at the August meeting.
Like be an email or something?
Yeah, yeah, parent square, just sending out a link to the website, attracting people to the new website anyway. Yeah, we can do that.
Alright, cool, so you're good?
Yes, sorry.
No, totally, um, that's it, I guess so, only kind of final call here for the code of conduct public hearing. Okay, we will go ahead and conclude that then, and now we will move on to the approval of minutes, so, very good. Alright. With respect to the June twelfth meeting, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to educational law, approves the June twelfth, twenty twenty four, regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. A motion, motion from Amy. And a second from Chelsea, thank you. Any questions on the late meeting minutes? Alright, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Everything going good there, Tim, with board docs and all that?
Yeah, just, we were just talking about the June twentieth in the packet, it still says work session, but it was changed on the agenda. The packet had already been printed and was ready to go out, so.
Okay.
The June twentieth was a regular, a regular meeting.
Right.
Putting your packet, paper packet, it still says work session.
Just wanted to make sure we checked that.
Yep.
Well, good thing we're all digital now, because I didn't even notice, because I don't have the paper out. We'll go ahead and get the resolution, and then we'll, we can entertain any questions. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to educational law, approves the June twentieth, twenty twenty four, regular Board of Education meeting as presented.
Motion.
Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Amy, thank you. Other than what Tim mentioned for clarity, is there any questions on that one? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, thank you very much. Alright, personnel. For the personnel report, again, we will go by consent agenda, just by way of a brief summary. We have a variety of resignations, leaves, and mainly coaching appointments leading to the fall season, so you've all had a chance to review that. Is there anything that you would like to vote on separately, are we good to go?
I have a question, sorry, maybe a question. So, um, there's some information in here that I have questions about.
Mm-hmm.
That I would like to have a discussion in the executive session, so how do we feel about doing that?
Um, yeah, if that's something that you feel is like material to being able to vote, then we would have to do that either now or do it at the end, and just from a logistics standpoint, we have to, our executive session. We could break that out and pull it on after the executive session. Yeah, we could hold on the personnel vote. And then we could, we have an executive session planned, we could do it afterward. Yes, yeah, sorry, if, um, yes, I don't have you fully in the loop yet.
I know.
There is a goal, it was kind of a last minute thing, we are going to have a pre-executive session, and I'll make sure we're clear about the topic for that, so hoping you can stick around for a couple minutes.
Sure.
So what we'll do is, we'll just, I think, anyone in the concerned, can we, can we do personnel after the executive session at the end, or is there anything? I don't know, can we do injections there?
Tabling?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to actually amend our agenda to move personnel at the end, that's all we're going to do, yeah. Okay, very good.
Yeah, no problem.
Very good. So, that takes us to C S E and C P S E. You've all gotten to the work. And I'll go ahead and read our resolution here. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to educational law, approves the C S E, C P S E recommendations regarding student placement as presented.
Motion.
Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Amy, thank you. You're on opposite ends here, you're on a swivel, no, thank you though. Okay, any questions, we have Karen here, if there's anything from C S E and C P S E. We've got a new member of the group here.
He attends all the meetings, so he greets all the parents, and I've had parents literally kind of the entire meeting, and I love having him, he's not ever had it. And it's been a blast, because the ones are really stressful, so it's been really nice to be in the office and.
I think it's wonderful, I'm glad that you made the effort to get him certified and everything, I think it's great for kids and adults.
Does he make the rounds outside of your office too?
Yes, a lot of the arrival time is kids coming to see him, or me walking through, it's like, he's just like, I'm not there, it takes me twenty minutes to get from the front of my office, which is perfect, there's certain things that he specifically goes through every single day, he can rely on seeing him every single day. And then there's kids who just come to the office randomly, um, throughout the day, I love, even some multi-student stuff, I mainly, I do some research on fashion, for the students and the house too.
Awesome. Division of the district, there you go, thank you, okay, alright, well, with no other questions, we'll go ahead and vote with respect to C S E and C P S E. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, thank you very much. Reports and correspondence, you all have access to claims auditor report, oh, let's see, let's see here, yeah. Yes, well, so, any questions on claims auditor report? Okay, we're good, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for the superintendent report.
Uh, yeah, I just have a brief one tonight, first I'd like to just highlight how great graduation was, and my gratitude to Mr. Ryan George, and his team that works behind the seats and out in front with him, from his office staff to his counselors, to the senior class advisors. There are so many people that go into all the integral details of that day, and making it a success for our students, for our families, for our community. Thank you again to the board, it's still, you know, such a nice aspect that all members of our board are there, a part of that special day for our students, and seeing that final Walker cross the stage, and thank you to all of our donors, you know, Mr. George and I talked about it in length, particularly in the spring, we have a number of donors that make scholarships available to our students, and make college and career opportunities available to our students because of the support they offer, both individual families, organizations, local clubs. We are incredibly lucky to have the number of support, of supporting members in our community and around our community that have maintained that support for years and years, so thank you again to Mr. George, his team, all those donors, and for that really special event. And speaking of special events, I also have to highlight all of the great work that our staff does at the end of the year, highlighting from a U P K graduation, to the kindergarten sunshine day, to fifth grade moving up, to all the award ceremonies and musical events that happened in between the end, you know, those last four to six weeks of the school year. We are incredibly lucky to have dedicated staff members, community members, that lift up that work, that pick it up, drive it forward, and make it memorable for our students, and so a big appreciation to all of them, hopefully board members, hopefully community members got to attend at least one of those events, because they were really special, and thank you to everybody who was flexible with our half-days and the heat challenges that we had, both locally, in just our district, and in, and in our town, and in our community, but also regionally, and the response and the support and the flexibility from everybody to not only flex on those days, but then also what that did is made us have to flex a lot of events into a smaller window of time, so thank you to the administrative team who adjusted, the teaching staff, the support staff, the students and families, because there was a lot that we wanted to make sure that we kept traditional to the end of the year. And just, the, the last couple of highlights I have is that, you know, effective communication was a goal that we had talked about early as board, that we had talked about early as a district, Chris shared the website that we've adjusted and made some real significant updates to, that is, will hopefully be live, and ready to go now, so people can access that, so again, if people in the community have feedback around that, please let us know, because that is a very important area for us that we try to clean up when it comes to our ability to send information, distribute information, provide necessary information for our school and community, so please provide us that feedback. Moving into next year, this is going to be a continued focus, Chris has been great in developing an internal communications plan that we're working on, that we're going to be sharing with the board, I'll be sharing it during the leadership retreat, and then we're eventually going to work with staff to help understand what we communicate, why we communicate, how we communicate, so that we can build that consistency that I just talked about early on when I started. The last one is just a reminder that we are going to continue forward with student reps moving into next year. Mr. George and I will jump into that right away in September, looking for those student reps, hopefully getting them, those nominations to the board as early as October, next year we would do that in the spring, it was just this year due to the vote, we couldn't do it until the vote happened. So next year that will be something that happens in the spring, and we will again move forward with two student reps hopefully next year. Last update is just calendar updates, just a reminder to folks that the district is closed for Independence Day, and then on July eighth, we start a cooperative summer school, and July fifteenth, we start our summer clinic at the elementary club.
Great, thank you so much, a lot of great stuff there, and I'll just quickly reiterate a comprehensive communications changes and just, you know, expanding on how we communicate with consistency, the website's fantastic, so a lot of great examples of that, and Chris, thank you so much for joining us this year, I see the team effort, I'm really being consistent there, so fantastic. Alright, and we have committee updates, so I think the goal is to hear any updates from, is it the Capit Project Committee?
Yeah, Cap Project Committee has met again, if anybody has anything else from the branding committee, we have four members right now, so Scott is on the branding committee with Chelsea, and Barb and Matt on the Capital Project, and our last Capital Project meeting was about a week ago, June twenty-fourth, so I'll turn it to board members that have any updates for the group.
On the Cap Project, we had broken down into three groups, and we tried to, we threw us to, to, to get a analysis of what we, of what each group thought was a priority, so the three smaller groups, you were able to get a more individual breakdown of what they're looking for, and why, and have, having more lengthy conversations, but it basically came down to that this next vote is going to be, if I'm portraying this correctly, it's going to be more of the vital infrastructure ends of the projects, not the glamorous, not the stuff that you may or may not see, but critical infrastructures such as water pumps and things like that, lost a water pump with the recent power outages, which was a sizable chunk of money, and I'm sure Tim's looking at insurance, if there's anything that's going to be picked up on that, but we were looking at water pressure, things like that. Things that, again, are not normally seen by the public, but something that is an infrastructure related issue. And so we, that's basically the way we came down, and we'll have a next, we'll actually have a priority list finalized at our next meeting.
Yeah, hopefully by the, if not next, by end of July, we have two more meetings, July fifteenth and then July twenty-ninth. And Tim and Jeff and I just met with S E I and Watchdog, so Watchdog will be coming on to join us moving forward with the next meetings, so Jeremy and Derek, who most, we haven't met, and Marcus Whitman, as well as Jen will be joining from S E I to help us start talking about some of the things that we liked about Whitman that might not necessarily be Capital Project related, but are related to branding and some of those pieces that we saw in their cafeteria, in their gym, so John Paul has asked Jen to come and be a part of those conversations too, so may not be in Capital Project, but she'll be a part of the conversation, even if it's outside of that project.
Barbara, if you care to add? Okay, you want to pre-order one of them?
Okay, thanks.
Branding committee, I know we have some, some business around that today, but is there anything you care to share during our committee updates?
I missed the last thing, so I had to defer to Scott on that.
Okay.
It has been a, it's been great serving on that committee and having very productive and insightful conversations, I think, with all the other members.
Yeah, nothing to lose since our last meeting. Beautiful folks are here. It's been a good, very good cross-section. I believe we'd have a valid cross-section of the committee recommendation to the board tonight.
Well, I just want to express gratitude for the folks that have taken on the extra effort to be part of these committees. Some of the work is, you know, it's all challenging, well, it takes time, the time investment, and it's important to the district. So, I think we're doing well with that approach to some of this, some of this work, so thank you. It's fourth block. Fourth block, yeah. Fantastic. Thank you, Scott. And I appreciate hearing the updates. I mentioned most of us do during, during this format, so thank you. All right. That closes out reports and correspondence. For financial reports, you've got a financial report and a treasurer's report in your digital packet or your paper one for now. Do we have any questions on the financial report or the treasurer's report? I'll go ahead and accept those on behalf of the board. Got that right, didn't I, Ken? Financial reports, good. That was, okay. Okay, with that, we also have three business items. First, first is, sorry, I'm just, things are close and out of line. What's that? Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at this because things are just slightly out of order online, but we're new at this yet, so, okay. Yeah, so the first is a memorandum of agreement with the, with respect to the elementary principal. So, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Board member, let's see, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to educational law, approves the memorandum of agreement with the elementary principal.
Motion.
Motion, Chelsea. A second from Amy, thank you very much. Any, do you have any questions? The adjustment? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. Next up is an M O A regarding CSEA payroll dates. Board member, geez, I gotta be used to this. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to educational law, approves memorandum of agreement with CSEA concerning payroll dates. On a swivel here. Is there a bump in? Chelsea, thank you very much. And a second from Amy, thank you. Any questions? It's kind of a...
Yeah, why did the dates change? Why did the, the recent change in dates? Is it just billing cycles?
We went from every other week payroll to bi-monthly payroll, starting July first.
Simplification of administrative processes, is that?
Yep, yeah. The change in payroll dates, yep.
And as I shared before, it's not just CSEAs, everybody. It's just that we had M O As because they did not have that in their contract. Teachers have it, but their new contract administrators have shifted, so everybody else is already been doing it, we just didn't have any contracts, so that's why we had to do M O As.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. And... Tim, I...
Yeah, there's one last M O A that needed to be...
Yeah, it looks like it's down under, under...
No, I didn't, it didn't make, I mean, you know, I made it to Kim's, so Kim has it in her packet, but it's not...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Do you have it up?
I don't have the, I guess I can pull up my packet.
You got it right here? Yeah, I'm just looking for the resolution. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay. Here we go. Was in the packet. Thank you for saving me from digging it out, Ken. Growing pains here. Okay, the Board of, the Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the attached memorandum of agreement with Red Jacket Faculty Association regarding adding a stipend for the position of coach of the varsity golf sport. Motion? Amy? And a second from Jen, thank you. Pretty cool, and the golf team. So, I don't have questions, discussion?
That's awesome.
Yeah. That's neat, to offer that opportunity. You'll see, we're going to cover some athletic mergers. This is one where we'll come the other direction and bring it in-house, so pretty cool. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ken. And... All right, that brings us to other new business. Athletic department mergers and demergers. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the athletic department mergers. And you have a document that is boys soccer with Midlakes, girls swimming with Midlakes, and demerging golf with Midlakes, as previously discussed. Can I get a motion? Motion, Jen, and a second from Amy. Questions? Discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Very good. And the always fun plan approvals here. Ken, or Tim, do I have a resolution for that? Are they, okay, hold on, are they in the documents? I may need, is it, yeah, I don't think that's in here. Okay, we're good.
All right.
We're good, we're, we're good here. Thank you very much, Jen, got it. I tried, I literally did not get the packet out on purpose because we're giving it a shot.
No, that one was my fault. I didn't know you needed a resolution for plans, so I didn't pull it in there.
No worries. All right. The Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent to accept the updated emergency response plan as presented. And motion from Chelsea and a second from Amy. Any questions about the emergency response plan?
Yes, as far as keeping it on file, as far as keeping it on record, can we send a copy to both villages and to town? Because if we have an issue, it's more like a weather-related, and since the town has the large, putting the large trucks, things like that, it would be wise to coordinate with the two villages in town as well.
In the highway department, probably?
Yeah.
I guess I would have thought we'd do that as it is, I guess, emergency services for sure, but you're sort of beyond that, so...
Yeah.
I do, Chris, could you probably do that?
Well, Chris, when you, when you have a snow day, for example, who alerts you first? Isn't it, isn't it the town?
Well, we usually go back and forth, the town and Jimmy, Tom and I are talking to the different members that are out from the town plowing.
Town, Jimmy.
I mean, honestly, this year, we didn't have it.
Well, so, probably not anymore.
I just know what Tom and I talked about, which is Jimmy and him would reach out to people up at the town that are out and about from the highway department and saying, what does it look like? What do roads look like outside of our community? What sidewalks look like? And then, yeah, we make the, we make the decision kind of with them. And then I also make the decision with our regional superintendents based on what shared services there are and all the little things too. So, Midlakes, Bloomfield, Palmac, people, Ken, they would usually share orders, but we try to have consistency.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, there may be an instance where they have to close down Route twenty-one and you want those people taking...
I mean, you get it out to the fire departments and everything else, so...
Do you have this one?
Yeah. Cool, well, let's go ahead and vote. So, we got, so with respect to the emergency response plan, any further questions? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. So, we're good there. Chemical hygiene. So, let's see here. Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent to accept the updated chemical hygiene plan as presented. Motion, motion Scott, a second from Amy. Okay, again, Scott, Amy. Any questions on chemical hygiene plan? Discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. We're good. And, let's see here, I'm just gonna... Yeah, perfect. Okay. And so, finally, we're on, well, not finally, heading toward the end here, the special education district plan. So, annually, our special education department updates our plan for how we approach special education. And so, let's go ahead and tackle that resolution, get it on the table here, and then we'll see if there are any questions. So, let's see here. Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the special education district plan as presented. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Chelsea. A second from Jen, thank you. Any questions? We have Karen or Chris. Looks good. Lot of detail there.
I like the way it was laid out this time. It was very simply said. It wasn't like long paragraphs of all these words that nobody understands. It was pretty good plain language, so I thought, I thought it was very good.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. That brings us to the tail end of our public session. Oh, there it is. With respect to our mascot committee recommendation. So, I know we've got a few folks here interested in that. It's been a long road, and I just want to reiterate the Board's gratitude to the committee that did some very challenging, but I hope also rewarding, work. I don't know that we can say the district sought to be in this position, but the world changes around us, and we've done the difficult work to adapt and do that in a way that hopefully brings the entire community along and helps us to maintain, you know, the pride we all have in our history. So, with that, I will move on to the mascot committee recommendation. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to educational law, approves the mascot committee recommendation. Motion from Scott and a second from Chelsea. Aft, absolutely. Any discussion from the Board? And I'll just note that, yeah, I'll be able to, go there. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say thank you again, because I know that this has not been an easy decision or an easy task from the community, from you guys as members. It's, it's difficult, change is difficult, we all know that. And no matter the decisions made, some people will not be happy, but I, I really sincerely appreciate everybody's input in putting that together and us sort of leading the way and supporting the choice made by the committee.
And helping us take the way that...
Yeah, it sounds like it was...
This, to me, this is, when they were asking for people to be on this committee, I was emotionally too attached to be on that committee, and I thought it would be best if I was not. And it's just from past history, and I took it by myself to learn as much as I possibly could about it. And I knew before we even hired Chris that this is just going to be a win-win situation for you. Nobody's going to be happy with it. I have a lot of issues with the way the state has handled it. They gave us a deadline for having a competition with one of the eight tribes that they, that they recognize. And the fact that there's five hundred and seventy-four tribes, and they're only recognizing eight, does not seem to go along with the idea of education inclusion and, and just American way of life. My wife is a descendant of the Minimoni tribe, which moved here, they moved east as opposed to moving west when the canal was built. And they came from Minnesota to Pushdaw Basin, and they built a hotel there, outpost, trading center, they worked on the locks, and they're still around. They go by, last names are Minmin and Stebbins and Movey. I went to school with, here at Red Jacket, with a girl who was from the Blackfeet tribe, and she's still in the area, but like the, like the Minimoni and Blackfeet, they're not recognized by the state of New York. And I don't understand why that would be the case, why you would recognize one tribe as having more input as opposed to the other. There's also the, the larger organization that represents the Indians, and I'm trying to, it's not, it's National Native American Guidance Association, I believe it's called. But they represent ninety percent of Native Americans, and their goal is strictly related to schools and athletics and the continued use of Indian names to encourage people to learn the culture of their, their life and their heritage. And, and they actually came up, came out with a position that says the profile of Native American is not derogatory, it is beneficial to them, and they promote, they heavily promote it to be used. In fact, when the Washington Redskins at the time, when they went to profile, they got that rights from the Blackfeet tribe that I spoke of earlier. That we listen, the fact that we listen to less than two percent of the American tribes as opposed to all of them, I take an issue with. It's almost like a version of discrimination, in my opinion. So, I have a, a issue with that and the deadline. I have never heard of anybody ever having a deadline on education. It's not just a deadline for the schools to make a commitment, but you're also saying, the state is also telling the Native Americans, after this date, if your opinion changes, we will not accept it. Your opinion that day is the opinion you're going to have a hundred years from now. You cannot change it. And I don't know of anything or any item around where facts have not changed over history. And that kind of, that kind of attitude, we'd still be teaching that the world is flat. You have, the facts change from year to year, opinions change from year to year. We should embrace the fact that the Native Americans, the majority of Native Americans are not in favor of what the state is doing. And that, that requirement of a specific time to make a decision is all-knowing, and that's just wrong. The research that I have read, and the reports on how it's derogatory or how it's unsafe in the educational field, most of the reports I read, they all go back to one person's research that was done back more than a generation ago. She lives in Massachusetts, she's not a Native American, but everybody keeps referencing her work. Not everybody, but the majority of the reports all reference this one person's work. And, I mean, her work was done before the iPhone was invented, before Facebook. I think having something more up-to-date, more courage, would be beneficial to, to every, to all cultures. The, and I think there's a depth, there is a confusion on, in this whole conversation on mascots and what a mascot is. According to the dictionary, a mascot is something that gives you good luck. The West Point teams are called the Black Knights. That's not their mascot. Their mascot, their mascot is a mule. The Nattwas, Midshipmen, their teams are called Midshipmen, their mascot is a goat. Notre Dame, their teams are called the Fighting Irish, their mascot is a leprechaun. Air Force, their team is called the Falcons, their mascot is a falcon. And I think there's a lot of incorrect assumptions made that a team name is also a mascot. The thing that, the statements that I've read from the tribes in New York, they're all referencing caricatures and mascots. I don't see any of them specifically calling out teams. In fact, the Senecas, when this first came about, and they, the Senecas weren't in favor of it, and in their statement, they specifically called out Salamanca School District for using the word warriors and the Indian profile in their school system. Well, they thought, the leadership, they thought that was derogatory. So, Salamanca, which is forty percent Native American, they had petition, they had to petition the state to allow them to use the term warriors and the profile, and the state finally did agree. If a profile of an Indian is derogatory or racist, then the last place that should be used is at a school where forty percent of the kids are Native American. And if, if warriors, if the term warriors is not, or is acceptable to Native Americans at that school district, why would the term Indians not be acceptable? The West Senecas gave permission for a school district in Pennsylvania to use the term, to use... The West Senecas gave permission for a school district in Pennsylvania to use the ter, to use the word Indians as their team ma, name. Why is it that it's acceptable for one school district, whether it's side by side or separated for two hundred miles, why is it not racist in one and racist in the other? I just think there's a lot of things on this whole decision that just do not sit right with me, and I'm thinking that last week's, uh, ruling by Supreme Court in the Chevron case, where they're pulling back some of the overreach. I have to, I've got to, I'm gonna stick to the goal of... It's fifty years worth of heritage. I'm making a point for few minutes.
I'm, I'm okay.
Um, with the Chevron case, that Supreme Court ruled that some of these agencies were overstepping their authority, I think this is one of the cases where, does the state really have the ability? They, they do have the ability. They do have the ability to withhold public funding. Public funding for schools is in the New York sto, New York State Constitution. Would a judge really allow Department of Ed to hold back funding because of the name of a team? They really gonna hold back funding for books and educational or something like that? I, I just think this is a bad case, and with the four cases that I know of that are in the court system being pursued by other school districts fighting this, I think it's premature to spend money changing logos until those court cases are settled. Right or wrong, until they're settled. Why? We could find ourselves changing logos, spending money, only to find out, hey, we didn't need to, and we wanna go back. And that's what I'm gonna say, that's all I have to say on it. It's a, it's a, I do not blame the administration. I do not blame anybody here. I think this whole thing grew out of things that were done in nineteen eighties, seventies, sixties, whatever, where athletic directors weren't doing their jobs, coaches did not have the correct version of what the whole idea of interspecies athletics was supposed to be, and they let kids get out of hand, they let crowds get out of hand. But I don't see, um, I see this as a reaction to something that's no longer happening, and I think it's, uh, with all the things that could be addressed in the state to spend time and resources on something like this is, is just ridiculous. You know what I mean?
Man, I'd, uh, appreciate that. I think you're spot on. And that, this is a, not a small decision. It's not to be taken lightly. Um, I think individual members of the board may agree or disagree with various points that you made, and that's okay, right? This is the place.
Yeah, that's why you have a board, yep.
Yep, this is the place, and, um, and I know that, all that, and I believe you, that it's emotionally charged, and you're not alone, and, uh, appreciate you putting that out there, and...
Can I just say one more thing?
I should've kept going.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 'Cause I, I, I failed to mention this. To me, it doesn't matter if Red Jacket was an Indian, if Scotch, Scotchman, or Irishman, to me, Red Jacket himself is worthy for our kids to look towards as a leader. Like George Washington, he fought for the British. Like George Washington, he changed his mind. He changed his mind, he changed his, he changed his opinion of what is right and what is wrong. Um, if you look at what, if you read some of the speeches, um, about religion, he spoke about freedom of religion and freedom from religion. If you look at what's going on in, in the Middle East, and how many people have been killed just this year over there, here's a guy that, he followed his own Native American religion while he was married to a Christian for more than fifty years. You can still have difference of opinions and still love somebody, and I think that's a great example to all students. And they wouldn't know that unless you had something to force them to think about these things. Um, alcoholism is another thing. He ta, he spoke against alcohol, and yet he was an alcoholic in his lifetime as well. Despite that, he, he was a great leader for their community, and you look at it today, where somebody gets a DWI, they lose their job, they lose their career, they can lose their, it changes their whole lifestyle, not just for them, but for their whole family. And maybe having that example that, hey, people have flaws, it doesn't mean they can't be great people. And for those two reasons, those few reasons, I think Red Jacket, regardless of who he was, or who his parents was, or what his background is, I think that's a great leader, a great symbol for our kids to look at, to know. And it's, for me, having Red Jacket Indians on the name, it's free education. It's, we're teaching social studies without having to hire a teacher. Now I'm done.
Fair enough. Alright, um, I'll just kind of look one more time across the group here. Any further comments? Alright. Um, with gratitude for our superintendent, who's done a lot to shepherd this process, with gratitude for the committee that led this work, both on the board and in the community, with respect and gratitude for the community at large, and with, uh, a deep respect and appreciation for the, the heritage of this, this region and this school district, um, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Uh, so, with respect to the mascot committee recommendation, all in favor?
What is the mascot recommendation?
Well, you, so, okay. The, what we have, we have a board...
We're gonna review it after the vote.
Right, so you have the, the recommendation, right? So, we have, the goal is, you know, this is the board's decision, right? But it's made from input from all these, uh, you know, from, from the massive process that we've done, and so, the board knows what the recommendation is, it's had a chance to weigh that. If we vote...
I will have to, in my, in my packet, I...
Oh, superintendent's been sharing the committee's work.
Okay, alright, yeah.
So, we're changing, we're seeing...
No, 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 no change, we won't share it.
Yeah, yeah, and it's the same recommendations that were shared. They came directly from the committee, and so, we'll vote on that, and I believe, you know, we'll be able to share a little more, you know, the goal is to share more information as soon as we vote.
Yep.
So, alright. With respect to the, uh, the mascot, not by design, but with respect to the mascot committee's recommendation, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? One. Motion carries. Alright. With that, I will turn it over, so the board is gonna have a brief executive session, so please stick around, but we'll turn it over to our administrators and communications.
So, at this point, uh, Chris has been working at length with a lot of members of our community to share what this regale is gonna look like, so we're gonna share it here for the first time with this audience, for the board. After that, it'll be shared, uh, on our social media.
From the heart of our community, Red Jacket.
And it'll be shared via Parents Square. So, after the meeting, all of that will go out, so everyone will be seeing the same video in about how long, Chris?
Whenever you guys...
Whenever, yeah.
Conclude.
So.
Yep.
Nestled in the heart of our community, Red Jacket stands as a testament to over a century of educational excellence and rich tradition. Through the decades, Red Jacket has been more than just a school. It has been a cornerstone of the community, where generations have come to learn, grow, and build lifelong memories. And as we look to the future, Red Jacket continues to innovate and inspire, preparing our students for the challenges and opportunities of tomorrow.
From its early days, Red Jacket held deep commitment to academic rigor and the holistic development of its students. Alumni have carried forward the values and education they received at Red Jacket, contributing to various fields and making significant impact around the world.
In our history, Red Jacket has undergone major transformations, including the significant merger of two school districts. This union brought together diverse communities, forging a stronger, unified district committed to excellence.
The incredible success of our school physics sports teams have brought our community together time and time again. From championship victories to unforgettable moments on the field, these student athletes represent the dedication and talent that Red Jacket is known for.
The support from our community for our sports teams highlights the importance of school spirit and unity in building a strong and thriving community. Together, we celebrate the achievements of our student athletes who continue to make us proud both on and off the field.
Our archives are treasure trove of memories, chronicling the achievements, traditions, and stories that have defined Red Jacket over the generations. Traditions run deep at Red Jacket. From our spirited homecomings to our solemn graduations, each event is a celebration of our enduring spirit and unity.
The arts have always been a vital part of Red Jacket's identity, showcasing students' talents and bringing the community together in celebration and creativity of expression.
Every corner of Red Jacket tells a story. A story of dedication, perseverance, and the unwavering belief in the power of education.
Red Jacket is not just a place of learning. It is a living legacy, a legacy built on tradition, nurtured by community, and driven by the promise of generations to come.
As we honor our rich history and embrace the traditions that have shaped us, we look forward to a new chapter. Our tradition lives on as we move forward with pride and excitement, regaling our new symbol as future generations create good memories.
So, as I shared, that will go on, public ASAP, so folks will have, be able to see that video, they'll be able to see it on the website, uh, Parents Square, social media, um, that'll all be going out tonight. And thank you, a special thank you, Chris, for putting that together and for pulling all of those people together, both some who are right in our hallways every day, and some who are thousands of miles away, and giving them here in person to have those conversations and show their support, so, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, great to have you on the video, thank you. So, um, that's a wrap, folks. That's a, that's a long process, and, um, you know, it will, it will be received in many different ways, and I just wanted to reiterate how, how proud I am of all the work this group has done, and it's not easy, so thank you. Alright, with that, the board is gonna move into a brief executive session to discuss matters related to the employment of a particular person or persons. Um, can I get a, what? Uh, personnel, so, yeah, I mean, I would... Yeah, with respect to superintendent as well as matters of our personnel report, so. Kim, I'm, make sure I'm keeping honest here. Uh, executive session, it's gonna be personnel matters, so.
You'll have to come back out.
Yeah, yeah, do I have, I mean, I don't have the specific verbiage, uh, in here.
They're gonna move into the executive.
Yep, yep.
And then you'll move the board back into session, and then you'll do the personnel.
Yep, very good, cool. Alright, so, uh, we're gonna move into the executive session to discuss matters of personnel, the employment of a particular individual organization. Can I get a motion for that, please? Motion for Amy? And a second from Jen? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, board is in executive session. We're gonna move to the last one. Thank you very much to everyone who joined us. Um, that...